Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. We begin with their normal prayer, prayer and pledge. Those that would like to join with me, please bow your head. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have to serve the citizens of Saginaw in our community. We thank you for all the public service workers we have, all those that keep this city operating. We ask you be with them and keep them safe, especially during this time of holidays that are approaching. We ask this in your name. Amen.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Councilmember Milne.
Here.
Councilmember Tibbs.
Present.
Councilmember benches, pre-excused, Mayor Potem Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have eight members present and one excuse.
Okay. Couple things quickly here before we start. I'd like to remind the audience to remain quiet, refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, or other rude or obnoxious behavior. Also, this is a good time if you have your cellphones to make sure that you put your cellphones, please, on a silent mode for us. And as city council members, we know how important that is because we forget sometimes ourselves. So please mark those and put those so it wouldn't interfere. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a few tonight. I'd like everyone to know that the west entrance to City Hall has been under repair, if you've noticed, and we are expecting it to be open this Friday, depending on the weather conditions. And we do apologize for the temporary inconvenience, but we do look forward to the improved finished project. Also, the weekly yard waste collection through the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority and the monthly brush collection by the city is now suspended until April 1st of 2017. And if you're in the holiday spirit, I want to remind you that City Hall will be closed Friday, December 23rd, and Monday, December 26th, for the Christmas holiday. Mayor, that takes us to personal appearances.
Okay, before we do personal appearances, let me read here a little bit. As we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you are speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by our clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of our citizens, we ask that you be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching on SGTV, and to this council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. And with that, Madam Clerk, our first personal appearance.
Our first speaker tonight is Clinton Bryant. I do not see him. Our next one is Joyce Seals.
Good evening. I'm Joyce Seals, 224 North Fifth Avenue, Saginaw, Michigan, 48607. And to our mayor, Mayor Potem, and to the staff, as well as our fellow council members who are here tonight, I just have a couple of things I want to say tonight. We're having a town hall session on education over at Germania Platts, which is over at the old, it's CMH now, but it's the old Germania Club. And this is sponsored by the NAACP, as well as Ezekiel Project. We're trying to get some authentic participation from the community. Many people who come down to the Board of Education don't necessarily, they want to come, but they don't. And just a few people come, and we want more authentic participation. We would love to have you come and have your input. It's electronic process, you'll see the results, and then we have discussion, too. The one we had at Houghton Jones was absolutely excellent. We had about forty people there, and everybody really enjoyed it. Our superintendent even came to that particular session. So please try to come out. I'll give you a flyer and send it through to you. You'll have it electronically, because the next one after that is on the 12th of December, and that's going to be over at CWA Union Hall, and that's going to be at 6:00. So if you miss tomorrow, you've still got a chance to get in on the sessions, and we want you to be a part of that. Last thing I want to say before I sit down is that I know that you're thinking about a density ordinance as it relates to party stores and liquor stores. I want you to strongly consider it. Many cities have already done it, and I'm going to tell you, I'm on a team called Saginaw County Provincial Network, and we've been working on some things to try to identify problems in the community. Did you know underage drinking is one of them? Boy, if I eliminate some of these stores, it might help that process. If you're interested, I can give you some of the data. You can look at it yourself. And it's statewide data. We have it particularly for our county, so you can see the impact that alcohol is having on young children, some as early as seventh grade, and that's appalling to me. So as you look, I need for you to take care of that. I've come to this council, several council members before, about getting this done. They said it couldn't be done. I said it can be done because it's been done around the state, and we need to take care of that. We want to make our neighborhoods better, and we're going to do that by making, slowing some of this down. Want people to have their rights to have a business, but I need to make sure that I have a good neighborhood and a safe neighborhood as well. Thank you so much. I hope I'll see some of you tomorrow night, and if not, on the 12th. Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Beverly Yanka.
If you don't mind, could I make a correction in my name spelling? It's not a K, it's a C. All right. Beverly Yanka, 6730 Davis Road, Saginaw, Michigan, 48604. Good evening, Mayor Browning. Oh, I should tell you that I am speaking for a group of people in our, in Kochville Township. Good evening, Mayor Browning, council members, and city manager Morales. I come before you this evening as one of many residents who receive water from the city of Saginaw. I am giving each of you a copy of the letter that I received in November 2016 from your legal firm that states that they are representing the city of Saginaw in this manner. Tonight I am, as well as other Davis Road, city of Saginaw water consumers, here to appeal to you that you delay this action of shutting down our water during the cold, frigid months in December of 2016 and in March of 2017. This would only create a hardship, but, would not only create a hardship, but a health hazard as well to us. Presently, there are approximately twenty-five people depending on this water lifeline. Besides minor children, we have twelve folks who are elderly and live on a limited income. We have two disabled folks, one being a disabled veteran and the other who uses oxygen on a daily basis. We also have three homes that only receive hot water heat. So will they not only be out having their water denied, but they will not have any heat to keep their families warm during the winter months. So besides the possibility of our water pipes being bursting and exploding because they're going to shut it down in the frigid months during the winter, we will also have families who won't have any heat, and there's minor children in those homes. One happens to be a newborn. One never knows with the best intentions if these water line shutdowns, if they run into trouble working on the structure, delays due to inclement weather, or some other break in the system. We are also very concerned about the sediments that may break loose from, in these old water pipes that may be disturbed and possibly contaminate our drinking water when the lines are shut down for a period of time. We don't want another situation similar to what happened in Flint. A few years ago, the city of Saginaw put all new water meters through our homes. Why would the city of Saginaw Water Department go to such expense at that time knowing that this was, as quoted in this letter from the firm, that I, first time I ever heard it, "a temporary water service line"? This was unbeknownst to us, but they must have known it. This may have caused, and I would assume that this cost the city a pretty penny to replace those meters a couple of years ago, knowing that maybe in two more years, they were just going to discontinue them. We implore you, we employ you this evening to take action in this matter for our safety and health and well-being in delaying or suspending this action, as we spelled out in the letter from the firm of Gilbert Smith Borelowan and PC. I have two more sentences, if that's okay.
Unfortunately, we have to end, but you may get us a copy of that, that you had just read, if you would like, please.
Okay.
If you make a copy, get it to our clerk. We will be able to receive that.
Okay. You've provided water for us for over six, eight years.
Bev, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Bev.
Mayor, your next order of business is remarks of council.
Okay. Council members, reminder that we are limited to five minutes. And tonight, we begin with John Milne. John?
Good evening. I have three short comments this evening, considering matters around town. The first one is, for public information, the construction project at the corner of Houghton and North Woodbridge. This is environmental remediation from an old gas station there. They are going to be removing contaminated soils. It does affect the traffic flow for citizens going to or coming from Harrah Elementary. There's a short section of Houghton Street that is blocked off for the construction. I do not have a complete timetable on it, but I suspect with the scope of the work they're doing, they're going to be there for a month or two. The second item, I attended last Friday, an event at the Saginaw Rescue Mission. The AT&amp;T Pioneers, volunteer group with AT&amp;T employees, made the presentation of a donation of $2,000 worth of food to the rescue mission. And this was not just donated food. They donated their money. It allowed the rescue mission staff to purchase through the Food Bank of Eastern Michigan exactly those items they needed. And I spoke with Jeff Hagenauer from the mission. It allowed them to buy approximately three weeks' worth of frozen and fresh meats and vegetables, and canned, and other non-perishable goods that may last them three to four months. So they were very appreciative of this donation, and the employees of AT&amp;T had a representative present. They, they've done this before, but this was the right time of year to have that kind of donation come in. The last item is a request for staff. If the city manager could look into this, the northernmost block of North 10th Street, north of Carroll, it is a dead-end block, dead ends into the Lake State Railway Yard. It is a continuing problem with dumping of construction debris, household trash. We've been cleaning it up, and just about as fast as it gets cleaned up, it gets dumped there again. I wondered if it is possible that we could, through the use of something like concrete K bars, block that block of street off. There are no structures, and if it is not interfering with turnaround of rubbish trucks or something, the only other item I can see is there is one fire hydrant located towards the end of that empty block. But I could see that we had recently removed debris, and as of last Friday, there were already three fresh dumpings of construction debris. So that's all I have for my comment.
Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity last week with the mayor to attend a special gathering
and champagne toast of the Saginaw Promise. And I wanted to share with everyone what they were announcing, but before I do that, I think it's appropriate to acknowledge what the promise has achieved in a relatively short period of time. I think it's remarkable that they have awarded $600,000 in scholarships to 447 students since 2012. The first class of scholars are graduating with bachelor's degrees this year, which is pretty wonderful. And if you question whether or not it's having an effect on the community, the dropout rates have decreased significantly, both at Arthur Hill and at Saginaw High. And enrollment in colleges from Saginaw Public Schools has grown from 42% to 51%. What they were announcing, though, was a piece of the whole Saginaw Promise program that was key and instrumental to its creation. As everybody probably remembers, one aspect of the various promise zones was an effort to bring about some kind of economic development in the promise zone communities. And to do that, they looked at funding through tax captures. These are not new taxes, but tax captures. They set a base property value rate, and then once property values increase, they are able to capture a portion of that to help fund the Saginaw Promise. This year, for the very first time, the Saginaw Promise recouped $52,502. Now, it's important for two reasons. One, it's money for students who are seeking last dollar scholarships, who are graduates of the Saginaw Public School System or any high school located in the city, Michigan Lutheran Seminary, for example. But it's important, too, because it demonstrates that Saginaw, as a community, is rebounding. Our property values across the board have decreased over time, and we all know the reason for that. With the tax capture, it's proof that our values are going up. So I want to commend the Saginaw Promise. I wish Joyce was still here, because she is the chair of that organization. And Deborah Sanchez, the executive director, they're doing a bang-up job. On a personal note, I just wish to express my appreciation to council and to all of the city staff members. I may not have a chance to see everybody and say thank you, but I appreciate the condolences very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have much to report today, but I would like to mention that Wannegaas Credit Union is going to buy a home that was, that probably get demolished or whatever in the city of, near Rush Street, near the credit union. And we're going to rehab that house. We've got $40,000, and then the state of Michigan, Michigan Credit Union League donated another $10,000. And we're going to partner with Habitat for Humanity to redo the whole house. And then hopefully, we will sell that house for $35,000 to a low-income person, and maybe we, next year, we will do the same thing. I was wondering if the city of Saginaw had any funds that they do rehabbing houses with. I'm sure we'd be willing to partner with somebody to help get that done so we can improve those neighborhoods. You know, we're looking forward to doing that. Mr. Mayor was working in a neighborhood this summer. Wannegaas donated some money to clean up the neighborhood there, and they did a good job. So, you know, it's partnerships like this that we could do to help the whole city out in the hole. You know, it's, money's just going to be well-spent. The board directors of the Wannegaas Credit Union is more than happy to spend that money. And the Credit Union League and for the state of Michigan likes to be involved in situations like that. So I'd like to know, Mr. Mayor, if you can give me any information if the city has funds to go through that, too. Further, I don't have anything else to report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, have a good report.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all of our presenters, our public speaking people, for acknowledging their concerns and issues. I'm excited on Wednesday, MMA will have its next training on "Now That You're In", is "Now You Won: What's New for Elected Officials". So I'm hoping that we have, I know that we have some members that are going. I'm excited because I'm a facilitator, so you get a chance to see me in action. Other than that, I hope that everybody's staying warm. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to, I've been driving around town at night last night, and had an opportunity to see all the Christmas lights out there. The waterworks, City Hall. I really want to compliment our work crews. Phil, please pass the word. They look, they look fabulous. Done a nice job. For years, when my kids were young, we would go out to the waterworks and enjoy them, throw snowballs around, and take pictures, and they're going to be back this, this Christmas, all of them, even though they're older. So we're hoping to do the same again. It really looks sharp. And I really would encourage everybody out there to take a look, go drive around at night and see how beautiful the city's looking. And it's not just city buildings. Old Town and Downtown are really looking good. The Pride and Downtown Saginaw Association have done a really nice job with fixing up the two, the two downtown areas. Also, I had earlier asked for some information on disposal of fluorescent light bulbs, and Phil, again, thank you, we received that memo. Mr. Carwood has indicated, it appears that Lowe's Store has a year-round fluorescent light bulb recycling program, which everyone should know, if they want to get rid of their, their fluorescent lights, which do have mercury in them, which is the reason we try and, we don't want them in the landfills. And some Home Depot stores accept the smaller CFLs as well, but not the tubes. So please make sure they do not go into the, into the landfills. I do want to remind everyone that Tuesday, tomorrow night, at 7:00 at the Temple Theater, the Saginaw Bay Symphony Orchestra is having its annual Christmas concert. There will be a lot of youth choral society, a choral group singing, and it should be a lot of fun. If you're interested, it's a great concert. Another reminder is, the city now has flags, city flags that are on sale. If you're proud of your city, please consider purchasing those and flying them. Finally, I actually have, it's a comment from my wife. She was downtown recently, and commented how we have a good problem to have, and that's, she has to relearn trying to park when, on the parallel parking, when the streets and the park, parking spaces are all crowded, because we used to pull in without having to worry about it, and not have to parallel park. You could just park anyplace. And often, you can't anymore. You actually have to seriously work at parking. It's a good problem to have. People are starting to use our city, downtown, the Old Town areas. It's starting to get crowded again. It's nice to see. So she wanted me to mention having to relearn that as a, as a task, but she's enjoying it. With that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the speakers who were present this evening. Mayor Seals, I just really appreciate all the work she does for the city, specifically the new Ezekiel Project. Their involvement in the city is very encouraging. Ms. Yanka, I'd like to thank you for your service with the Saginaw Public School System. And, you know, I think having good relationships with our neighbors are important, so hopefully this is something that we can discuss and work out. I'd like to thank the city for providing, the council for the minutes of boards and commissions. It's exciting to hear how busy the boards and commissions are. They get a lot of work done, and a lot of good ideas come out of those boards. I hate to single anybody out, but the Downtown Saginaw Association, they put in quite a bit of money to have the downtown area look the way it does with the lights, and I'd just like to thank all our boards and commissions for your sacrifice and your work. At the last meeting, I did pass out some information about a alcohol density ordinance. I guess I, it's a gift that keep giving. I brought the commission agenda report from Kalamazoo, and it's basically an agenda report that related to their alcohol density ordinance that they passed. And I think I did submit a copy to the mayor as well, asked to the city manager to look at. And you can see, some of their concerns were similar to some of the concerns our residents have, and I believe it's even-handed, but it's just something that we can look at and review. I believe it's part of our job to, to set policy, and I believe this ordinance would As I mentioned before, I'm a board member for Reed of Saginaw County, in which we volunteer our time, specifically our lunch hours, to read with kids at various elementary schools in the city. I'm currently at Arthur Hill. We do have a lunch program with the students there. We're almost at capacity, but we still have three students who need some volunteers. So if we can have a couple more volunteers, that would be great. Then every kid who wants a mentor can have one. And it's unfortunate that, you know, we have kids who want help, but we can't find the adults to do that. So if you can sacrifice your time, I would appreciate it if you need to get in contact with me or Reed of Saginaw County to serve as a volunteer. I'd like to thank the staff for providing a memo relationship to, and related to our voting booths. I know that there were some concerns that, I believe, Arthur Eddy and some Matt Thompson, and it was a very good memo and kind of explained what happened there and what's being done to resolve it. The waiting time was about average compared to other cities of similar size and voter density. There was a suggestion about additional laptops, and it seemed like that was an issue about financing, and so I didn't know if that was a federal issue, a state issue, or a local issue, you know? And if it's something that we don't have control over, maybe we can encourage our residents to reach out to the relevant state representative, state senator, or federal representative, or federal senator, to see if that's something that they can assist the city in, assist the city with, if that is an issue. I think that's all I have, Mayor. I hope I didn't put anybody to sleep there.
We'll hear back from the manager in the future on the, our Kochville project out there, as you have received information today, council members. Council members, you've also received this wonderful green copy book that each of you have received these now. This is for a block grant. Actually, it starts tomorrow, if you notice that. The first, first one starts tomorrow at 5:15. Many council members have sat through the planning commission. As they hear of the presentations from each of those that have submitted, the many requests that we have here, the money is limited, but they will then, the planning, Human Planning Commission will then make a recommendation to us. Also, the city manager will make a recommendation. So these are the agencies that are looking for the community block grant development, community development block grant funding. So the CDBG, you have these. Please take some time to look through those. If you have any questions, the planning commission would be a place to hear those. And I believe those are happening right here in council chambers. I believe they are. Yes, they are. So right here in council chambers, and they'll have their presentations. So with that, I have nothing further. So, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We are now at the reports from the manager.
Thank you for a few items, and then we do have a presentation this evening. So one, one point about the laptops that the clerk put in her memo, there were two issues, and the primary one is just the technology to tether laptops together, which is why they have one. Each one has a qualified voter file on it. They would need to access that from every computer they had there. That technology is just being tested, I believe, in some communities now, and it might be available next year. So if it worked well and is approved, then, then we could go on to the next phase, which would be finding funding to be able to buy the additional laptops and, and the equipment to tether them together. So that might be an option, probably the next time where we would be really neat, well, actually, since we changed our voting cycle, the next time we would need to do that would be the election of governor in two years. So that's, that's where we are with, with that technology. I also wanted to update council, the next meeting on the 19th will be, will be having the audit presentation. And I think that that is, I think one of the earliest times we've presented the audit. we've presented the audit, which is a great sign for us, if you, probably not very many, well, I don't know if anybody on council was on there in probably 2007, 2006 and '07, when the audit was six or eight months late all the time. So we do have, we completed all of the work, other than the transmittal letter and some other things, close to a week ago. So I think when it's presented, you'll be happy with the results of the audit, again. I sent council members an update on the Delta College Development Agreement. Mr. Smith from Gilbert Smith &amp; Morello and I are working on that with the attorney from Delta College. We, it's very detailed. I think it's one of the longer agreements that I've seen for development agreements that we've done here in the city recently. So we just want to make sure that we have everything reviewed and get Delta's attorney to sign off, so I expect, we had last sent them our changes, I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday of last week. So I think we'll be on track to get that on the next meeting. And then, the, I sent some of, I think I did send all the council members, updates on some legislation that is being considered currently, that would relate to local units regarding retiree healthcare and other issues. If I get more updates, I will forward those to, continue to forward those to council from MML, I think is where they have been coming from. So as they come in, I'll forward them to you and see if it would have any impact on the city of Saginaw. I would actually comment a little bit on the water project this evening, because we did know of the personal appearance, and it was more generally stated, but I've received, once the discussion started, I did receive a message here from Mr. Carwatt, that in any cases, we can always provide temporary water line overground, which would mean that there wouldn't be without water during the construction process. I don't know if they would do that in December, because that's a one-day shutdown, and I'm sure all of you have had shutdowns for longer than one day, on your houses, when we have a water main break, or when we're doing work. But in March, when it's a longer, a longer period of shutdown, possibly the week, I think Phil says that there are options for a temporary service providing in that case. I would encourage the residents to contact the city. The letter did go out on November 3rd, so it's been over a month, and Phil had indicated to me that he had not been contacted by any residents about the shutdown. So that is something that, rather than come to council, we could have had another month or so to work on this issue prior to that. In any case, it's something that we can address in that stance. Ultimately, though, the project will be moving the line, so it will, I think, be incumbent upon Kochville Township to provide permanent water service to their citizens. And just to, it's in the documents that you received tonight, but Mr. Carwatt contacted Kochville Township in September of 2015 to advise them of this issue, which is well over a year ago that arrangements could have been made. So I think that's where the issue would be going next for residents there, is to go to Kochville Township and work with them. And finally, the Mayor Protem Clock mentioned parking downtown. Well, that's one of the issues that we will be thinking about and talking about with Delta College as well, because that's going to be a high-demand parking issue. And of course, we know we are having the farmer's market and new businesses in the Bancroft, and that's a lot of activity downtown. So one of the other projects that we have, and as you all know, council voted to list the formerly known as the Jezero House, or the Charles Lee Mansion, which is 633 South Washington. So we listed that with Ryan Sepharline. He's here tonight, councilman, or Mayor Protem Clock had asked for an update on the marketing, and I think he's got a nice packet put together here, and we'll give him some time to address council.
Thank you all for having me here, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I'll keep it pretty brief here, but I wanted to let you guys know kind of what I'm doing to try to market the home, to find somebody to come in and obviously restore it. So through Century 21, as soon as it's listed, it goes out to over 200 of the most visited real estate sites. So I printed off a couple little packets for you to all see, so that you can see kind of the impressions that it's getting and the amount of activity that it's receiving. Another thing that I've done is I had a professional photographer come in, which I know kind of sounds maybe silly, because the home isn't in the best of shape, but it is important to market it the best way possible, and professional pictures definitely do help. With the help of Councilwoman Annie Bench, we did an exterior cleanup, where we were able to round up just about under 30 people, and I'm hoping everyone got a chance to see that, which I definitely appreciate the opportunity to have been able to do that. I think it made a big impression on the home, and just the driving by and the overall scenic view of it. Another thing that I've been utilizing is Facebook marketing. Obviously, everybody's always on their phone and Facebook, so that's a really good kind of way to get everybody to share it and try to get it out as far as possible. Another thing that I have done is reaching out to This Old House Magazine. Had good luck with them when I sold the Hill House, so I was hoping to get that same reaction from them, but I have not gotten anything back, unfortunately. I was hoping to get like a save This Old House, or maybe they just come in and save it themselves, but not yet. So another thing is trying to reach out to notable historic preservations-minded people. I can't think of her name, but out of Detroit, there's one that's very popular, and I've reached out and many other people, but once again, we didn't get anything back from her, as well as trying to reach out to like local developers, to see if there's anybody that might be interested in, you know, a really cool project, whether they want to do residential or just as a flip to invest in the city, or maybe they want to do something for a commercial-based property. So, so far, I've shown the home to 31 potential qualified buyers, and by that I mean that they are pre-qualified, they can prove that they either have the funds to purchase the home, or they're pre-qualified to get a loan to purchase the home. So far, I've got about four people that were pretty highly interested. Biggest concern is just a few of the stipulations, but I've reassured them to just if they make an offer, people can negotiate, you know, but until there's an offer, really can't get that to happen. Another thing is, is there's a unique property website that I created. So in one of these handouts here, you'll see that it's 633southwashington.c21.com. So if you go there, that's a unique website just for this home. So that way, anybody looking for, let's say they search it, all the different names that it's been called over the years, all those are in there, so if you just Google it, it'll come right up, to try and help make it easy to find any information. Now with that website, in the last 30 days, there's been 961 views, and then five detailed searches, where we're able to actually see that they searched out very detailed information on the property. Also, I included was Zillow, just a kind of an update, so you could see how many people with that, and that's got just about 3,100 views in the last week, and 181 detailed searches. Obviously, Zillow truly are the more popular, so. But so far, that is kind of a quick update on that, but I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Questions after this time? Congressman Michael Balls?
Do you see if people are qualified to buy the home for $25,000? Do you check to see if they have the money to restore it to?
Not right up front, to get a prequalification, because they have to go in, they're going to have to get their own estimates to find out what they're going to need. So I don't have an exact number, you know, we can all guess, but you need someone to really come in, because it's going to be unique to each person. If this person's handy, they're going to save a lot of money. If it's somebody that's coming along, that's going to hire everything out, it's going to be a whole different number.
What's your estimate that it would cost to restore?
I have a just under 4,000 square foot home on Hoyt that had very similar issues, but I've done most of the work myself. So I think you could honestly, for about $100,000, you could do wonders with that home. But you'd have to be willing to get your hands dirty. If you're not, probably looking more like 150 to 200. But I'm not a total expert on that, so that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other council members? John, though? You mentioned the volunteer group that got together and did some cleanup. Are we looking at any additional volunteer time like that for additional debris removal, or even cutting away some more of the trees and stuff to improve its curb appeal?
Yeah, I don't think that'd be, you know, that was one day. So on one day, we accomplished pretty much all the debris. The yard was very, very overgrown, so I think we started around 11:00, and we ended at about 9:00 PM. You know, some people, myself and a few others there, the entire time. I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility to do another, you know? So there's other things that could still be done. And I know that the business behind definitely appreciated getting some of those trees off his building, so, but we didn't want to overstep our boundaries on what we were doing there, either, so. But yeah, we would definitely.
Congressman Tibbs, go ahead. Okay. You had mentioned that you were involved in selling the Hill home?
Yes.
Do you know how quick the turnaround, I think you said it, but I-
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
It was. They had a very, very detailed plan going in. Obviously, I don't blame the city for not wanting to go through the expense of creating that to possibly not find a buyer. But with the Historical Society, they had money from grants to be able to use that. So they, it was very, very clear. When you went to see the house, you knew what you were up against exactly, for every little detail, as far as this is what we're expecting, you can't do this without permission. You know, it was a fireplace that was really historically important inside, so they had an easement put on it that it couldn't be removed, it had to be professionally cleaned, it must be professionally restored. Someone just couldn't come in there and start painting on it. But it was pretty limited, and it was very specific and detailed, so that definitely helped.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Being none? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, and with that, that completes the management update.
Mayor, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
And the agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city's website, on SGTV, Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, leaving room for acceptance. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Councilman Michael Balls, number seven. Is there any other exception? Any other? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven, approve a purchase order to Engels Auto Body for $2,502.80 for repairs to water shop pickup truck number 57-0253. Councilmember Balls?
Is this for body repairs, or for repairs for the truck? And if it is, if it's just for body repairs, did the truck get hit? Do we have insurance, or what?
Yeah, it is for body repairs. Left recorder panel in the bumper area, and my understanding is, our guy was parked, and this vehicle basically sideswiped. I don't have the accident report, or the, because we do have an accident investigation committee that all accidents go in front of, so this stuff all goes to them. Unfortunately, though, our deductible was $25,000, and the damage was far less than that, so, and I don't know all the laws of the insurance and all that, but as far as it being a no-fault state, I have met with the city clerk, there might be a way to collect maybe $1,000, or up to $1,000 of this, so we will do that research and get what we can from the individual that, because my understanding in this particular accident is we were not at fault, and basically, the individual that struck the vehicle, our vehicle was parked.
So you keep that in your kitty, or what?
No, it would come in as revenue, and then offset the expense in that department.
Okay. I just wanted to know, we got insurance on these vehicles?
Yeah, we do.
You know, $25,000? Do we get a lot of this? I mean, I've seen a few.
I don't know what a lot would be, but I mean, we get some on occasion.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are we, any other questions? Yes, I would like to-
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, your next order of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Is there, council members, do you have any reports from your boards or commissions that you're on? Okay, and we have no appointments. So, Madam Clerk?
We are now at motions and miscellaneous business, and we do have one item. Consideration of motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation per MCL Section 15.268, Section E.
It's been moved and supported. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bench is absent. Mayor Protem Clock? Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Bryant? Councilmember Balls? Councilmember Humphries?
Yes.
Councilmember Millen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tibbs?
Yes.
And Mayor Browning?
Yes.
We have eight yes votes and one absent.
Okay, we're going to go into closed session and return to court.